Directing more and more of our citizens to reputable banking services in our communities. I'm not sure that you know this as well, of the metro cities in the state of Tennessee, Jackson, Tennessee has the highest per capita number of predatory lenders in the state per population size. Unfortunately, you want to know the community that has the highest for any community of any size? Brownsville, Tennessee. Brownsville, Tennessee. And so, this has been a conversation that I've been having with Mayor Rawls over the past year. And again, in conjunction with the Jackson Financial Empowerment Center, let me be very clear, we don't serve just Jackson, we serve anywhere in West Tennessee. Mayor Rawls and I have been having a conversation about expanding that service very practically to Brownsville in the form of a Financial Empowerment Center counselor that would serve Haywood County. And so, through funds that we were given through the Ford Fund, we have taken those dollars, we could have done just about anything with it, they were unrestricted, but we decided, I spoke with Mayor Rawls, to invest those here, that we want to invest those in this community and through partnership with the city to establish Haywood's own Financial Empowerment Center counselor to serve this community and to do that very directly in the same way we're doing in Jackson. And so, it is our hope that that will be up and running. At the earliest, it will be sometime this summer, but we do have our Financial Empowerment Center Coordinator, Sarah Beth Bone, who is currently on medical leave, and so we're waiting for her to come back from that. So maybe at the earliest this summer, but more than likely for sure this fall, Brownsville will have its own Financial Empowerment Center counselor, and that will be in the form of Miss Centressia Spears. So Centressia has served as our Financial Empowerment Center Assistant, Administrative Assistant for the first year, but she has recently completed all of her own Financial Empowerment Center counseling that's required due to cities for financial empowerment. She just recently went through that process, and she's beginning now even to see clients in Jackson and again surrounding areas, but beginning in the fall, she will be here in Brownsville three days a week. So we're going to be looking for space for her to set up shop, but again, our hope is to be able to serve more clients, be able to help them build their financial stability. So that looks like one-on-one counseling, that looks like budgeting assistance, but look, this also looks like help with small business advice and so many other aspects as well. And look, I believe because of the proximity of Brownsville to Louisville City, you hopefully will have a lot of entrepreneur type of opportunities that are arising. So we want to help shape this community to help prepare it for those investments. And so, yeah, we're super excited about that. Our liaison for the city of Jackson is supposed to be here, she may roll in on two wheels in just a moment, but again, we're very, very excited about that and be able to offer these services for free to the city of Brownsville. And again, be able to connect more and more of your citizens with reputable banking services. And I'm happy to take any questions at all.
Anyone have any questions? All of them?
If not, I have just a few goodies for you. So there's just information here about some of the services being provided. I got, I got one.
No, no, that's okay.
No, I got one for you.
I'm gonna get some candy.
It's a candy. You're supposed to be here right at the summertime.
Yeah, I know, right. Thank you, thank you. Matt, thank you. This has been an ongoing conversation, Ms. Spears, we welcome to our community to do services. There's been a large conversation around, as we look at these high-level investors, six billion dollars coming to our community, that those that are not making, the working poor, what do we do about those that are, have been disenfranchised before the Louisville announcement, that don't get disenfranchised during this opportunity? So, thank you.
And not only that, Mayor, if I may add one thing, all of us are so incredibly excited about Louisville City for the most part for very good reason and the new opportunities it will create as we expect that Louisville City will be paying the types of wages that have never been seen before for that type of work here in this community and in West Tennessee as a whole. But what do we do when we have individuals who have access to that who've never had that type of access before? Again, we want to make sure that people know how to do, to manage that well so that they can turn around and be a blessing to this community and grow in a way that we all want to see. So I think it's an incredible opportunity for Brownsville and for Haywood County as a whole. And there's Kristiana, she is the coordinator for the Financial Empowerment Center, and she's, she's rolling in on two wheels if that's what you're saying. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. I can say nothing about having an opportunity to serve on the United Way Board and with the opportunity from the board members to go in as the chair elect. This, United Way doesn't serve just Jackson, it serves the entire West Tennessee region. And Matt has come forward with a vision, the old model, the way United Way's done business, he's totally flipped it upside down by hiring a grant writer, by going after grant funders, by having a relationship with the board and with the community. So, thank you, it's our honor to work with you. And Ms. Spears, I look forward to working with you as well. Hi, Kristiana. All right. So thank you so much. Now we'll move forward with our audit review from Mr. Matt Woods from the ATA. He'll come forward and give us a little update of what we're going on in the audit review.
Mayor Board. So you have in front of you a packet, it is your financial statements without an audit opinion inside of it, that is not a fault of the city. We are finishing up some single audit testings on the ARPA funds and some other paperwork required by the state of Tennessee, but to allow you to move forward with the budgeting process and to kind of give you an update that the financials are in good shape, we wanted to show you some of this. I'll show you just a few pages to start. The first couple of pages there, we've talked about in years past, that's the statement in that position, it's the financial statements as a whole for the city. It takes the general fund and all the other, the ARPA fund, the Community Development Fund, and it moves them all to what I would say to you in a business form, it puts the fixed assets on the books, it puts the pension liability, the OPEB liability, the supplemental pension plan liability, it puts all those on the financial statements. So a few items just to note there, you can see it on page 12 or the second page in your packet there, the OPEB liability this year, 1.2 million, the supplemental pension plan, 568,000, and as it was last year, you can see on the first page of your packet, page 11 there, the TCRS pension plan is still a significant asset, this year 1.91 million dollar asset. We've talked about that, sort of how the investments were in 2020 and what the effect it had on it, and then we're looking really, even though it's a June 30, 22 financial statement, for TCRS, you're really looking at activity during the 2021 year, that's how they record their information. 2021 was a really good year for the stock market, so it actually caused the pension asset to significantly better itself, I'll say increased, meaning it was a bigger asset. Now obviously, in next year's financial statement, that number's going to come down because I think the state of Tennessee made something around 20% on their investments in '21, coming back from the COVID year, and obviously '22 hasn't been the greatest year in the stock market, so that number's going to go down a little bit there. But since we don't really look at that information much on day-to-day, I want to show you some of the general fund and some other areas here. I apologize for the size of the writing here, sorry about that. Apologize for the size of the writing here, but on page 15, it's about the fourth page in your packet there, the general fund ends at a fund balance of just over $5 million. That is a, that is a small decrease from the prior year, 174,000 at this point. Again, you got to take into account every capital project, every repair and maintenance, everything we spend is recognized in the general fund as an expense, but then when we get to the front of the financial statements that we were talking about just a moment ago, those expenses are removed and are added into the fixed asset section. Because there's not a fixed asset section, capital assets recorded in the general fund, a year where we have a lot of capital activity, it can affect our fund balance, but obviously our cash remain healthy there. You can see cash, 4.73 million in the general fund in the current year. Few items of note, the ARPA grant fund is a new fund in the financial statements for '22. We had some remaining cash, but we had payable of about $106,000, so the unspent portion of ARPA as of June 30, '22 was $28,000. You know, as we spend that in '23, that number goes away obviously and continues to also use up the new ARPA funds that we would have received in the '23 fiscal year as well. A few other items to note, if you'll flip to about the middle of your packet there, the page number 60 at the bottom of your page. This is the TCRS pension plan. We had for the first time ever since pension had been recorded on governmental financial statements starting in the 2014 year, we had an asset last year of just over $20,000. This year, as stated a moment ago, we have 1.91 million dollar asset. The majority of that is because we earned 3.9 million, or the state did, we earned 3.9 million on our portion of the assets. So you can quickly do some math, 25% or so on investments, it's a crazy number to hear. But again, that number will come back a little bit to reality next year, it, it does not go back to a liability, I've already seen some of those numbers, but it will come back down significantly. Those amounts have zero effect on the general fund, that is all at the government-wide level, and as I've stated to this board in previous years, they allow that change to be amortized over a five-year period so that you don't have net income going way up, way down based on investments. It's amortized over a, what I call a five-year smoothing period to, to allow time for the change to happen there. Just a few other pages I'll show you, flip over two pages there to page 62. The supplemental pension plan, hard to say this the right way, but because we test the investments of the pension plan, we present what next year's liability is going to be. Next year's pension plan, the supplemental pension plan will actually be an asset for the first time, but in the current year financial statements, it's a liability of 568,000, which is down from last year, being that, that is a closed plan, that's the only direction really for it to go, is for the liability to continue to come down. That doesn't mean we don't owe money year to year, it just means that we've already planned and allocated assets to cover costs in future years. One other number I'll show you on page 65, just a couple pages over, this is the OPEB liability, where we offer health insurance and other things to retirees. It had a OPEB liability of 1.25 million in the current year, significant change from the prior year, and you can see kind of in the middle of the page there, it says differences between expected and actual experience, that decreased the liability 578,000. That is where the actuary will, will change an assumption basically, or change what he's expecting to happen and will reduce that liability. So, all good things fitted to those, that has about zero effect, I know, with what goes on at City Hall day-to-day, it is more long-term planning, it's planning for not only our retirees, but our employees, so for those pension plans, for the OPEB plan to trend in the right direction, just tells us we're making the right contributions to those plans. The one major change in governmental financial statements this year, it's been a Gadsby Standard, called Gadsby Statement Number 87, which simply means if we lease assets to or from individuals or companies or whatever, we have now an obligation to record those in the financial statements differently than we did, whereas you and I probably described a capital lease as us going and buying the next police car or fire truck, et cetera. Now, that type of transaction is just basically a capital outlay, no, it doesn't get treated, it doesn't get called a capital lease anymore, but if I go over here and I have a piece of property or a building that I want to lease out to a company in the community or whatever it would be, I can lease that out and it's treated a little differently in the financials, it basically puts an asset and a liability, whereas you're still making the same payment, it doesn't change what payments you're receiving or making, but it had no effect on this year's financial statement. Any transactions like that we enter to in the future, those will get reported, reported on the financial statement. The last page I'll show you, page 74, I think it's probably the last couple pages in your packet, just shows our federal and state grants for the current year. We have 1.64 billion in federal awards, which 1.37 of that is the ARPA funds in the current year. As stated earlier, that is the grant that we had to perform a single audit on, which just basically means we have to do more extensive compliance testing on it, whereas, you know, we look at invoices that are getting reimbursed on any grant. For a single audit, we have to take what's prepared by the OMB, basically the White House, on what the grant is supposed to do and test the individual transactions for a bunch of different categories. So we've done that without the letter being attached to this tonight, because I told the mayor, I couldn't issue because I've got some paperwork with the state that they've got to get, that without that, I don't put the whole report together and state everything because I don't want it to go further than this room right now, but we've got, we've got no issues with the single audit, no issues with any of the numbers in the financial statements in the current year. So thankful to Sherri, Mayor, the entire team here have been great to work with, and I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all have.
Are there any questions from the audit, on the audit review?
Well, I would say wow. Pretty good audit. Any, any areas, any areas that you could say from an audit standpoint that we could improve on?
No, sir. I mean, what, obviously, this is not the bound copy of me saying I'm done, done, but I've told Mayor and Sherri and the entire team today, we've got no issues, we would be able to indicate not only in an audit report, but obviously I would be able to write y'all a letter with smaller issues, and we've got nothing as of yesterday, we've got nothing in that letter or plan to, anything related to that can impact the board.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
All right, no further questions. All right, thank you. No more, no action to be taken on the audit review, once we receive the entire bound copy of the letter or any, any issues that need to be addressed, but we're looking good, our fund balance is looking good, we're still in excess of $5 billion. Our net position is to continue to improve, so thank you to all the hard work and thank you to ATA for giving us audit review. So with all that good news, let's look at the audit contract. So what we have for us, and we'll take action tonight, is the approval of contract for the audits for the Alexander Thompson and all. Financial audit fee is $32,500, pension audit fee is separated, $5,950, for a total audit fee of $38,450. This will be the audit contract, it will be filed with the Comptel's office, covering the period from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the audit contract. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
They've moved it to the second. Are there any questions, concerns from all? If none, we'll call for the vote. All the papers that are known by the sign of eye, those opposed next, contract approved. All right. Resolution number 1045, reducing the pension benefit plan for public safety. Would this, Ms. Bass, you want to take this from the ATR perspective? It's pretty simple and often it might sound complicated, it's just pretty simple.
This resolution, this resolution will allow the public safety employees to retire at age 55 on 25 years of experience and receive the supplemental pension plan at an reduced rate. Back in this, I guess back in June, July, we actually froze the pension plan, and those numbers were a mere entire age 60 or 30 in order to get four. The TCRS has adopted the sup, the reduction rate for public safety individuals, so we wanted to add that to our policy as well.
Are there any questions?
I want to change over all the numbers, it's just reduced rate of 55 and 25.
That's correct.
Often another option.
I think the motion ended, we approve Resolution 1045.
I hear a motion, do I hear a second? They've moved it to the second. Are there any questions, concerns from all? If none, we'll call for the vote. All the papers that are known by the sign of eye, those opposed next. Those are two passes. Here we go. Orders number 1003, the budget for the 2023, 2024, first reading. As in any orders with the city of Brownsville, we have two readings on the first reading, we take under consideration from the board of all, and second reading, we have a public hearing where we hear from the public, questions, concerns. All right. What we have for you, we have had an extensive budget workshop, we've gone through the entire budget line by line, and, and here we are tonight on our first reading. So, what you have before you in your packet? What you have before you in the packet is the entire budget, include all funds. What we did, the only thing we did, we did receive a grant from TDAC for sewer and wastewater treatment at about $2.1 million, which will be forwarded on to the Brownsville Energy Authority, and that was a major input. What we have at the end of the day is our revenue is being 15 million, $8,360, including all the, and then once you put in the tax equipment for the tax pay in lieu of taxes, our total revenue is 15 million, 804,459. When you look through the general fund, you look through all the other funds, then of course we see that at the end of it, pull it up here, we're looking at having a deficit budget in a little over $500,000. Well, we have a healthy fund balance, so at this particular time after all our audit reviews, after which we were waiting eagerly upon, we are now ready to look at our budget. With that, with that in mind, we see that a total expenditures and the change in the net fund balance will leave us with a $5,074,910 at the end of this budget year. Looking at the total amount of revenues and expenses, that we have a deficit of $559,438, taking from fund balance, which with the beginning balance is $5,634,348, and once again leaving us with a balance of a little over $5 million at the end of this projected budget year. I'd like to, are there any discussion and the questions that we have? I have cheat sheets here somewhere, but it's going to say basically the same thing I just said, and that's the total amount of all our cash receipts and assets are about 15 million, 804,459. Total appropriation, 16 million, 363,897, even with a deficit budget of 559,438. At the end of projected budget year, our fund balance is still in excess of $5 million. All the general fund, we have local taxes, 7 million, 67,000. License and permits is 72,350. Intergovernmental funding is 7 million, 466,347. Charges for services, 1,500. Delta Heritage Center is 40,500. Finance and forfeiture is 84,500. Misalliance revenues is 276,000, and other sources is 796,000, giving you a grand total of 15 million, 804,000. Appropriations, appropriations look like general government in the amount of 2,415,000. Public safety, public safety is 7 million, 669,000, which is a represents over half your budget, but it's been invested to public safety, that's our police, fire, and animal control. Public works is 1 million, 495,000. Health and culture and welfare, 1 million, 206,000. Community development, 3 million, 757,000, 743. So, and then your total appropriation is 16 million, 363,000. So we've made sure this budget reflects the will of the ultimate in the community, that we invest heavily in our people. We removed a lot of the capital outlet from the grant, from the, not from, from the grant, from the budget, we removed a lot of capital outlet. We emphasized on rates, on benefits, on making sure we take care of our people to take care of the community. So you'll see major increases in the fire department and the police department being the largest, so we can retain our police officers, provide public safety. Before we start adding positions and growing our police department, we got to take care of those and take care of those now. So there was a heavy emphasis from, from the board of all, and from myself, and thank you, Ms. Bass, for putting all this support that we emphasize on public safety, over half your budget is investing in public safety. And we know in the world that we live in today, that that's a huge investment, everybody has the right to have a safe and productive environment, so we invested heavily in this particular budget. Are there any questions or discussions from all? No? Okay, wow, we did, the workshop paid off. All right. All right. Like I said, this is the first reading of the budget, we don't anticipate any changes now that we have all our audit numbers in place, so at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve orders number 1003 on the first reading. Do I hear a motion? Motion, do I hear a second? We've moved to the second. Any questions, concerns, or discussions from all? If none, we'll call for the vote. All the papers that are known by the sign of eye, those opposed next. All right. So we got a vote for our resolution and orders done, and this time we have a roll bar permit from Signe for our booth right there. This is an annual event that we have every mall day, it's continued to grow, even, and continue to be happening each and every year, so thank you, Signe.
It's the same as, we want to block Sunny Hill Cove from the last driveway of the Comfort Inn into the Cove, just for Saturday. That's where the Corvette Car Show will be going on and in the event of rain or something, vendors and things like that will be out there. It's pretty much the same as the last 13 years.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this roll bar permit. Do I hear a motion? So move, do I hear a second? They've moved to the second, all of them, right? Any questions, concerns from all? If none, we'll call for the vote. All the papers that are known by the sign of eye, those opposed next. Thank you, Signe.
Thank you.
No rain, no rain. All right. Community Development Board, Ms. Kristiana.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Any questions regarding community development? I just briefed an update on the downtown supply grant, the management board has made in this quarter application into the two highest scoring businesses, they're going to propose improvements to the downtown district commission, and in May, hopefully that's get passed in the May meeting. The CDB childcare grant, the public committee period for the environmental review expires on May the 11th, once the view, once that's been done, then submit to the state for approval. And on the Mercer Road multimodal, the initial NIPA coordination is completing and accepted, and now it's time for the formal NIPA document.
Any questions, concerns? Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Now, we'll have a financial management report from this.
I've got any questions or concerns, what's filed for that?
All right. All right. So everything seems to be still be on target for the projections, so we're good to go? Yes, absolutely. All right. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the financial management report. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? They've moved it to the second. All the, all the, any questions, concerns about the financial management report? Your bank balance is defined here in a complete report. If none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor that are known by the sign of eye, those opposed next. Okay. I have a measure report. Does move along so well? I said one thing. We're, we're, we're planning a Juneteenth celebration, did you see the flyers? They're passed out here. We're doing a prayer breakfast, it's empowering changes, I think, this year. Saturday is June 17th at 9:00 AM at the Carver High School Gymnasium, and Ms., Ms. Connors is correcting on the address, it's 709 East Jefferson, but everybody who's in Carver Gymnasium is certainly not, we can help to get there. We'll still be hosting, I'll be hosting the event, and our special guest speaker is my Morehouse brother, Reverend Norman, brother keep normal, the Broad Street Baptist Church, First Baptist Church Broad in Memphis, Tennessee, Mount Hood. But Reverend Norman's a great speaker, he's very passionate about what he does, and I think all his great time, the food is going to be excellent, so we'll use our family restaurants, we always do, to provide food, it's free to the public, and we want to come out and recognize Juneteenth and the celebration on Saturday, June 17th, 9:00 AM. That's all I have from the measure report, Ms. Matthews. If none, we have all the report, all the material.
I have City Board meeting on August 16th. I have youth deals, Memphis, Tennessee, they're helping building our people and giving them I have, uh, uh, youth deals of Memphis, Tennessee, who they're, uh, helping building our people and giving them, uh, free training on HVAC and electrical. Uh, we attended the health, uh, we did the building and all.
Yeah, yeah.
Big setting on the ground.
I ain't said fuck.
We did attend to help, help for our hospital in Brownsville, it was, uh, it was, it was excellent. I really enjoyed myself, I got B-12 shot. I'll be having my next board meeting, it will be on the eighteenth of this month on Tuesday. Uh, War Four, not only War Four is invited, but the public is invited to this event. And I will have a special guest from, uh, public, uh, company called CCO. They'll be my special guest, Mr. Clueless Foster. Six o'clock. I got PM.
Thank you. And, uh, give us the date, the time again?
Six o'clock. Six o'clock, May eighteenth. At six o'clock at double, double, double.
Gotcha. Thank you. All the, this?
Just a couple of things, uh, I attended the library board meeting, and there've been some, uh, difference in funding over the last year. The city agreed to pay, um, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, at least the, the number. Uh, and the county agreed to do that this year. So, that's going to enable us at the library to, uh, continue to, uh, increase our, our level of services and support the community, uh, through the Emerald Public Library. And also, uh, I had the opportunity to go out with the public works yesterday and look at a couple of, a couple of issues, uh, within War Three. Maybe dealing with traffic, uh, I think that's kind of a big topic today, even though we're writing a lot of tickets, I think, in the city. Uh, you know, there still seems to be a high number of speakers out there. So, we talked about, we talked about auctions out there with some signage and, uh, also talked about some, uh, some kind of traffic control measures, uh, maybe not necessarily speed bumps, such things that, uh, things that we can do to, uh, improve public safety, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Minister, go ahead.
Good evening. I have the utility service report. The TDA bill for Anthony was eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-six cents. I hate to count on the former rates of March, five point zero. Again, the May first, the average resident elected bill, interest question of thirty point nine seven percent through the TDA real cost adjustment. And I did have my community meeting last night. I had a superintendent screw, his guest named seventy-five residents there. At least next night I had good access to leave. I will have a cleanup on this Friday, if it doesn't rain, along with, uh, Hate Company is going to pitch in and help with the cleanup on this Friday. Anyone would like to come out and pick apart and donate fellowship, because they're cleaning up. I'd be glad to hear that, we're going to need it, uh, on my fourth, on fourth of March, and on Friday morning at seven thirty this week. That's my report. Oh, by the way, I did attend the, uh, Call Perfect fundraiser, and it was awesome.
Thank you, Vice Minister, go ahead. All the side? Alright, um, a couple highlights to give on the last year. The Call Perfect was very well attended, I see some faces, see the people nodding yes. Very well attended, on-site, it blew all the city. We'll continue to move forward the bid project on Foster Avenue for the drainage project that has been ongoing to continue to improve the drainage there with that new plant residential division coming in. Um, traffic control, I've been hearing a lot about the traffic control. We're not, I, I, I think we're going away from speed bumps is the, is the name, but we continue to do that. I'm working, we're working with Cordrickus and, uh, Public Works, thanking for their service to make sure we put those in place. Um, I did attend, I have our tenth annual health care at the hospital, which is well attended, everybody in the bus. I actually did a bus to decline these distractions. Um, and that was really good to see them there, they're going to come back and do more. I think you talked to them as well, Vice Minister, go ahead. We're also, as I mentioned, we did, uh, receive a contract for approval of a two point one million dollar TDA grant to go into the Brownsville Energy Authority for improvements in our sewer and wastewater. Alright, I'll be in the department here to have their reports. They're standing now. Okay, alright. Well, at this time, uh, thank you everyone for coming. I see Mr. Flynn here from LRK, he's been, he's been home a lot of time, hall meeting, a lot. Uh, we see this, this, this wise. Thank you so much for, you know, this, this makes sure we, uh, engage them, talk to them about the future, what we have in Brownsville. So, that, that is, our budget is, is, is numbers. But you always put your money where your mouth is, but having the grant funding to bring financial empowerment to the community. So, thank you, that's a, that's a big deal. Uh, this time I'd like to entertain a motion, we adjourned? So, move, do I hear a second? Second. The papers, go on.